Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I'd like to call the meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to order, and will be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner, and then Commissioner Jordan will lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you again for the blessings that you've given each one of us, Lord. We're thankful for our freedoms that we enjoy in this country right now, Lord, and we think about the 3,000 troops that are going overseas, Lord, to deal with this crisis with Ebola, and we've got several hundred that are going from Fort Campbell. Lord, I ask that you just go before them and you protect them, you keep them out of harm's way as they serve our country in this role. I ask that you be with each one of the individuals that are represented here tonight, Lord, both the commissioners and our citizens who are here with us. Help us to be able to have a clarity of mind tonight, Lord, and the dialogues that we're going to have, and that we respect each other and each other's opinions, but above all else that we honor you and we bring glory to you through our words, our actions, and our deeds. I ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercey.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kusch.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio. It's 21 present.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. We have now, before your copy of the minutes of the last meeting, do we have a motion? Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed those minutes, find them in order, and move for their approval.
Right, and second from Commissioner Serenio. Did anyone have any corrections or additions? If not, then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. First on our agenda next is a resolution of recognition for Sergeant Shawn Applegate, and we're going to call on Commissioner Schaefer to present that resolution.
You know, it's kind of, it's real nice to be able to stand up here and recognize accomplishments that have happened in our county because we know that someone has done good, or many are doing good in this case. And I would like to ask that the Sheriff's Interstate Crime Enforcement Unit to please come forward, all of them if they would. And if the sheriff and any of the chiefs that may be here would join him. And it's, Commissioner Cook brought this to our attention, and I'm chairperson of Public Safety Committee, so that's why I get to read this resolution of recognition. But I would like at this time, if Kristi Applegate and her children could please come And this resolution of recognition is for Sergeant Shawn Applegate, whereas Sergeant Shawn Applegate serves as a member of the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office Interstate Crime Enforcement Unit, and whereas Sergeant Applegate stopped a driver for a traffic violation on January 8th, 2013, on Interstate 24, where his canine partner, Jet, alerted him to the presence of marijuana. Whereas during his investigation, Sergeant Applegate recovered $300,000 worth of stolen jewelry, and the driver was charged with aggravated robbery. And whereas Sergeant Applegate testified in the driver's trial in California, resulting in the driver's conviction and a 35-year prison sentence. And whereas DNA testing in California led to the driver being indicted in July 2014 for a double murder that occurred on Christmas Eve in 1998 in Minneapolis, Minnesota. And whereas Minneapolis Police commended Sergeant Applegate for solving this double murder, and we recognize him for his dedication and commitment, which made this arrest and conviction possible, as well as an indictment for an unsolved 16-year-old double murder. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to Sergeant Shawn Applegate for his service and commitment to excellence as an employee of the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office. Mr. Chairman, I so move resolve this 16th day of October, 2014.
Second, by Commissioner Cook and many others. All of you in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I would like to ask Sergeant Applegate if he'd like to say a couple of words, but before he comes over, something I just found out four minutes ago, was last week, he passed the bar exam in the state of Tennessee.
I'll just say a few things. I want to thank all these guys that are standing behind me. Chris was our lieutenant at the time, the sheriff for letting us be out there. There's a lot of people that wonder why the county would have a unit on the interstate when THP is available to work, and THP's understaffed, and we've had a unit that Chris started back 16 years ago. And it's just an honor to be out there every day and to have our canines, have our family support, and just have a good group of guys and a good boss that support us, and we just go out there and try to enforce traffic laws, make our county safe, and look for other things that happen to be going on. So, thank you all for your support, and thank you sheriff for allowing us to be out there and for our leadership, and we're just grateful for the opportunity to be recognized, and it's a team, it's not just me, so, thanks.
Thank you very much. And you see now what we have in this county that's helping all of us out, all 300,000 citizens that we have that people are watching out for. Thank you.
Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chairman. Today is a very special day for many reasons, and I would make a motion that we add a resolution to our agenda tonight to celebrate a truly historic day.
At the end of your motion there?
(Inaudible).
Huh?
I want to add this part.
Oh, you want to add it? You want to put another pla-- where are we going to put that? Right here? All right, so, we have a motion by Commissioner Stevens to add an agenda item, do we have a second to that? All right, Mr. Gurley? All right, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. All right, so then you may proceed, Mr. Stevens.
Like I said, today is truly a significant day. It is National Bosses Day, but that's not why I'm reading this resolution. It's also National Dictionary Day, and somebody special's birthday, Noah Webster. But it's also somebody else's special birthday. Mayor Burgess is turning 75 today, so we wanted to honor him with a resolution. Whereas on October 16th, 1939, Ernest Burgess was born in Rutherford County, Tennessee, to Ernest Burr and Marcella Burgess. And whereas Ernest Burgess is a graduate of Central High School, Middle Tennessee State University, and the University of Tennessee. And whereas Ernest Burgess worked many years with and is retired from National Healthcare Corporation, serving there as Senior Vice President of Operations. And whereas Ernest Burgess has been married to Peggy Bryant Burgess for almost 55 years, and they have three children and seven grandchildren. And whereas the Burgess's are active members at North Boulevard Church of Christ, where Ernest Burgess serves as an elder. And whereas Ernest Burgess was elected county mayor in 2006, 2010, and 2014. And whereas despite his great responsibility and his many roles, Ernest Burgess is also a small businessman and a cattle farmer. And whereas Ernest Burgess has served on many boards and committees in the community that have increased the quality of life here in Rutherford County. And whereas it is appropriate for the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to pause and recognize individuals that serve the greater good. And whereas the service Ernest Burgess has provided for Rutherford County during his lifetime is honorable and distinguished. And whereas it has come to the attention of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners through a very special source who requested that she remain undisclosed. That Ernest Burgess celebrates his 75th birthday today, and that he should be congratulated on reaching this historic milestone. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we wish County Mayor Ernest Burgess a very happy 75th birthday, and be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners wishes Mayor Burgess many more years of health prosperity and distinguished service to our community. Resolved on the 16th day of October, 2014, and Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Mr. Jordan and others, I believe, anyway, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you for your recognition. Well, I don't know what I can say, except I'm embarrassed about all this, but all of you that know me well know that I'm fairly a sensitive person, and some of these things are going to really sort of get to me, but thank you for your support. I mean, that's the main thing. We have a great team here in Rutherford County, and you're a major part of that team, and I'm just happy to be a part of that group that's working together to accomplish so much for a great county. Okay, moving right along, maybe. We're ready for public comments, and we do have three people that wish to make public comments tonight, and I'll remind those speakers again, as we always do, that we hope that you'll limit your time to three minutes and respect that time. And so we're going to first call on Kim Rush with our Guidance Center, and she can come forward and make her comments and tell us who she is and what her address is, and thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kim Rush. I am the Director of the Guidance Center, which is the Community Mental Health Center for Rutherford County, as well as Cannon County. Very briefly, we provide outpatient mental health services to all the citizens of this county. We provide services from the age of two up to lifespan. There's not anybody that we will turn away, we will see everyone. As we know with the way that the world is right now, and the way things have kind of turned for the worst, we are actually seeing an increase in people accessing mental health services that have never accessed it before. So we appreciate the support, we just wanted you all to know that we are here. It's always a resource for everybody in this county, and if there's ever anything that we can do, please feel free to contact us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next, we have a special presentation with respect to the good work that our risk management group has been doing, so we're going to call on Tim Vessel, who is with Cigna, and he's going to make a presentation regarding an award that Cigna is giving our risk management group for wellness programs, so Ms. Street and Kelly and others, that they may want to tell us who is here with them, can participate in this. So, Mr. Vessel, you may make your presentation and tell us what you choose to say.
Thank you. Well, good evening. On behalf of Cigna, it's our pleasure and honor to be here this evening to present Rutherford County with the annual Cigna Well-Being Award. The Well-Being Award recognizes Rutherford County's commitment to improving the health of its employees through a very comprehensive workplace wellness-focused program. At Cigna, we've always been very focused and dedicated to driving health improvement in the workplace, and we're also very committed to recognizing employers such as Rutherford County that share that passion and that are investing in a culture of health. We applaud your efforts, we recognize your accomplishments, and thoroughly appreciate the commitment to this initiative, and congratulations. Congratulations.
Mr. Vessel, tell us what was our peer group that we were compared to? I mean, what's the population of all the folks that were considered for this and how did, you know, which might reflect a little bit more on the impact of it, all right?
I'd be glad to. Yes, this is actually the first time that we've done this in the Tennessee market, so this encompasses our full block of business, our entire client portfolio across the Tennessee market, where we went through an actual application process, where we invited our clients to submit to us applications that were very detailed in outlining the specific actions, initiatives, programs that are in place to positively improve, impact the health of their employee populations and extended populations, including community efforts and initiatives in that regard. So it was a very rigorous process. We had many applications, and we developed an internal committee that reviewed each and every application and selected one winner, and Rutherford County is that one winner. So in today's environment, where this is a priority and a real true area of focus for employers, most employers in fact, in this community, across the state of Tennessee, there are a lot of creative things that are happening out there, a lot of different programs and initiatives that employers are using. So to be selected as the best of what we saw this year in terms of the application is really quite remarkable. So it's a tremendous accomplishment and a credit to the team.
All right, and Melissa, if you would introduce some of your other team members here, just to give them a bit of credit for this, too.
With me tonight, I have Kelly Perrin, who is with Rutherford County. She is our wellness specialist. And also I have Lori Cook, who works for Take Care, and for those of you who aren't aware, Take Care is the company that manages our onsite medical clinic. Certainly, I can stand up here and accept awards on behalf of Rutherford County, but the real individuals who deserve the credit are here to my left. They work very hard, they go out into each and every school, perform wellness on will activities, do an education, screenings, and other events for county employees with the overall goal of providing improved health and access to preventative screenings and other information important to an overall best health plan. So, congratulations, ladies.
Okay, thank you very much for a job well done. Next, we would like to ask Mr. Gary Eeks to come forward and make his comments.
Evening. I stand here in part to apologize to you for wasting your time on September the 11th, just passed. I'm not here to condemn the decision you made that night, but I am here to refute the manner in which you reached that decision. I'd known for some time that many of you had been approached by a fellow commissioner to provide him your support in a decision perhaps facing this commission after the August 9th election, and was also aware that many of you had promised him your support sometime prior to that election while he was still sitting as a commissioner. I believe three laws have been violated in this process. Any elected official using their influence to gain financially from a decision being made by the board/commission they serve on violates the Tennessee Hatch Act. That influence was applied prior to that commissioner leaving that position. In discussing that matter with any other board or commission member, a violation of the Open Meeting Act occurs. I'm fully aware that that discussion was held by each of you as you were asked for that support, so in my mind, that violation occurs as well. Some of you refused to offer that support, but the majority of you did. Since you were in essence hiring an individual for a paid position, and your individual decision had been made prior to officially announcing that position, and prior to any application being accepted, in my mind, you violated the EEO Act with your pre-selection and your failure to consider all applicants. The open meeting violation is easily rectified. All you need to do is void your decision, revisit the matter both the same way if you desire, and it becomes a legal decision. The other two decisions or issues may need some form of adjudication to correct. On September 2nd, several of you told me that you had promised your support to your fellow commissioner some six to eight weeks prior to that Thursday night. Within the next four days, several more of you told me the same thing. Chairman of the Steering Committee made a comment to the newspaper, which could only be perceived as his personal support for the ex-commissioner on the night that the position and the procedure for applying for that position was announced. But that's not the worst thing that went on here. The worst thing that happened during this charade was that you had the audacity to ask citizens of this community to come and stand before you and espouse their interest in serving and enumerate their qualifications, while all the while, you knew exactly how you were going to vote. I do commend the five commissioners who did not participate in this charade, and all of you who are seated in front of me tonight know that what I have said is basically what went on before and during this process. Those of you who know me, and know me well, and know me for a time, you know that I'm an encourager. Ask my commissioner, David Nipper, ask him if I didn't encourage him as he sought his seat on this commission. Let me encourage you to never again perpetrate such a charade on the citizens of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eeks. Okay, next, we have elections and confirmations, and we'll call on Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners in front of you, we've got several items that we need to go over this evening on our agenda, first being, you'll see a list of notaries on your iPad that need approval. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that these notaries be approved.
All right, we have a motion, a second, from Ms. Allen. Any questions or comments? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Second, we've got to fill a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Steering recommends Mr. Gary Farley for approval. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for his approval.
And a second from Commissioner Jordan. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Next, Commissioners, we need to fill two vacancies and one alternate vacancy on the Beer Board. Steering recommends Mr. William Harper as the alternate, and recommends Ms. Teresa McKee and Mr. Glenn Taylor to fill the other two vacancies. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Right, second from Commissioner Nipper. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
No.
Was that one no, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir, Mr. Johnson. And another no here from Mr. Jernigan. Let the record reflect, two nos in the 19 yes. All right, go ahead, Mr. Turner.
Commissioners, we have a vacancy on the Agriculture Advisory Board. Steering recommends Commissioner Joe Frank Jernigan. I make a motion for his approval.
Second, Commissioner Johnson. Any questions or discussions on that one? All right, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
We need to fill a Commissioner vacancy on the Community Care Board. Steering recommends Commissioner Carol Cook. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for her approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan and Phillips. Any questions on that particular motion? All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
We have a Commissioner vacancy opening on the Records Commission. Steering recommends Commissioner Robert Stevens. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for his approval.
That said, second on that, Commissioner Kusch, please. All right, any other discussions or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous.
Next, Commission, we need to fill three Commissioner vacancies on the Insurance Committee. Steering recommends Commissioner Will Jordan, Commissioner Allen McAdoo, and Commissioner David Nipper. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Any questions or discussion? All right, all in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous.
No.
Was that a no? Excuse me, Mr. Johnson, I'm going to have to be more attentive. Said I'll have to be more attentive on that. All right, let the record reflect that Mr. Johnson voted no. All right, continue then, Mr. Turner.
And finally, we need to announce the appointment of Judicial Commissioners. Steering recommends the appointment of Ms. Lisa Cannon and Ms. Angie Smith. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And the second, Commissioner Schaefer. All of you, then, without a discussion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion right now that we suspend the rule so Judge Davenport can come up here and introduce us to the two candidates that we just approved.
Motion to suspend the rules, do we have a second? Commissioner Cook, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Judge Davenport, you may introduce your new judicial commissioners.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I never want to forget who brought me to this wonderful dance I get to do every day for you, and that's this body that is sitting here today. So this is another pivotal point in a juvenile court. These two ladies that you just approved, they're already employees, they're just taking on additional responsibilities and not costing the county more money. Director Lynn Duke is with us tonight, and with her through the detention facility will be Sergeant Lisa Cannon. They'll be helping during the day with law enforcement to issue those petitions, and our Director of Youth Services, Ms. Tina Bigby is here, and with her office, our Youth Service Officer, Ms. Angie Smith, and she's going to be helping us, and I just wanted you to meet them and know that we're still out there working for you every day and appreciate it. Thank you for relaxing the rules, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, if I could, I just wanted to address something really
quick that was just brought up in public comments, if I may. I think I speak for the Commission. I take great offense personally when I'm being accused of, for lack of a better word, selling my vote and having conversations that never took place. And I want everyone that's in our audience, I want everybody that's watching on TV to understand that this is not a commission that can be bought, and I'm not going to stand up here and allow myself or any one of these commissioners to be accused of something that did not happen. I can only speak for me, but I trust enough of these commissioners to know that these are moral folks up here, that their vote's not for sale, they're not up here to look for backroom deals, and they're not up here to look to see how they can improve their lot in life or try to make a backroom deal with a friend, and I take great offense to that. You've got 21 commissioners here in Rutherford County that stand up for you, and we believe in what this county stands for, we believe in the families that we represent, and we believe what this body stands for as far as integrity and values and working hard together, and so I reject those kind of comments. I understand the frustration from a candidate that might not have been chosen to fill that spot, but I wanted you folks to know as our citizens and those who elected us to be in these positions, that we're up here to try to do the best job for you. We're not up here to try to make sure that our buddies get what they want, we're trying to make sure that you get what you want as citizens, and I apologize for interrupting, Mr. Chairman, but I felt like I needed to address that because I took that as a personal attack on my character as a Christian man of integrity, and I took it as a personal attack on the commission that I serve with, and I didn't think I needed to stand for that.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're ready to move on, then. There is no unfinished business for us to discuss, so we'll now start the reports of our standing committees, and there is a monthly report from our Purchasing Committee, and we need a motion to approve their action. Commissioner Schaefer, a motion to have a second. Commissioner Gooch, all right, any questions on that report? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, we're ready to start our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee Rehearsal. All right, we're ready to start our Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee Report. Commissioner Jordan will carry us through this.
Well, I'll warn you upfront, I've been fighting a cold, and if I start coughing, I'm just gonna let Commissioner Baum come over and finish for me. We'll start off with Resolution L to J-2A. I thought it was L. J-2A, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the General Fund be amended as follows. Risk management, decreased unassigned fund balance, $10,000. Increased expenditures, $10,000. That's for the volunteer personnel and the volunteer firefighters, where there wasn't enough money put in that during the budget process. Domestic violence, resolutions for victim assistance, $13,620. Part-time salaries, $12,750. Other salaries and wages, $19,780. And related benefits, that's the money they've got that can only be used, that comes from the court fees, that can only be used for that process to add an extra employee and a part-time person to utilize some of that money that we can't use otherwise. Sheriff's Department unassigned fund balance, we've got some carryovers, $18,281 from unassigned fund balance to go to in-service training, $2,367. Other services, contracted services, $8,438. Other supplies and materials, $2,812. Another supplies and materials, $4,664. And then we've got payments to cities, the payments in lieu with taxes, $40,220. That goes, that's a pilot agreement from Nissan, and that's the final part of smartness for this year. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from Commissioner P. Anyone have any questions on this particular General Fund budget amendments? All right, there being no questions, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstained, motion passes.
All right.
Item J-2B, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Ambulance Service Fund be amended as follows. For public health, $100,000 transferred to other funds, $100,000. That's the overage for the Pace Center remodel. Mr. Chairman, resolve this sixteenth day of October. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Anyone have any questions on this? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, sorry, are you ready? Have you all voted now? We okay now, Brian? Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one no, motion passes.
Learning time for all of us. Item J-2C, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Special Purpose Fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Department increased asset forfeiture funds, $448. To confidential drug enforcement, $448. This is asset forfeiture money just going into the correct account. Resolve this sixteenth day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Okay, and a second from Commissioner, who was that, Turner? All right, any questions or discussions on this? If not, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstained, motion passes.
Okay, maybe I need to give just a bit more time. I think maybe the abstained person probably voted yes. Motion carried, is that?
So we had twenty-one yes?
Item J-2D, resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Drug Fund be amended as follows. $155,000 restricted for public service, public safety, excuse me. Repair and maintenance of vehicles, $10,000. Law enforcement, $5,000. Building improvements, $10,000. Data processing, $30,000. Law enforcement equipment, $40,000. Motor vehicles, $60,000. This is drug fund money that the sheriff's been kind enough to, we've urged him in the past to use some of that money where they could to backfill in their regular budget that's taking the place of tax dollars. We personally, I appreciate him doing that. And resolve this sixteenth day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, who was that? Mr. Kusch? Any questions on this? All right then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2E, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Road and Bridge Fund be amended as follows. Capital Outlay, State Aid Program, $557,300. State Aid Projects, $837,300. Asphalt, $280,000. Highway Bridge and Maintenance, $24,000. For the Bridge Program, Engineering Services, $55,000. Highway Equipment, $31,000. Resolve this sixteenth day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Now wait just a moment till we think you're ready. If any discussions on this or questions, if not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
It's taken a little while to come up at least. Mine's coming up after you're saying you have the right, when you start your.
Was that better?
It's there now, though.
Mr. Jernigan, have you voted yet? There we go, thank you. Now I can see.
Yeah, vote early, vote often.
All right.
For those of you watching home, we're breaking in a new voting system.
Record the votes then.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you, now we're going.
Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Education and Capital Projects Fund be amended as follows. Committed for Capital Projects, $470,570. Engineering Services, $2,600. Maintenance and Repair of Buildings, $442,470. Maintenance and Repair of Equipment, $25,500. This is carryover from last year, stuff that just hasn't been completed yet, no surprises here. Resolve this sixteenth day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And Commissioner Nipper, second. Any questions on this at all? All right then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2G, whereas the Rutherford County Emergency Medical Service has been made aware of an Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which requires a 20% match. And whereas the purpose of the Assistance to Firefighters Grant is to help firefighters and other first responders to obtain critically needed equipment. And whereas the Emergency Medical Service requests permission to apply for a grant funds in approximately of $280,000. And whereas if said grant is awarded, the emergency service intends to purchase twenty power stretchers. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Commissioners that the County Mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to submit an application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Resolve this sixteenth day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Kaplan. Any other questions or discussions here? All right then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item J-2H, whereas the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department has been notified of a grant award from the Tennessee Department of Highway Safety Grant in an amount of $1,8,614.91, requiring no matching funds. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the County Mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Highway Safety Grant in an amount of $1,8,614.91. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein. I talk like that an awful lot now. At length verbatim, for the period beginning October 1st, 2014, ending September 30th, 2015. In addition, the General Fund be amended as follows, same numbers. Resolve this sixteenth day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Pettis Reed and Mr. Serino, I think.
And all the grant materials on your iPad, if you want to read those twenty pages there.
Right. Okay then, any questions on this? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Right, record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Whereas the Rutherford County Correctional Work Center has been notified of a grant award from the Department of Justice for a Justice Program Grant for a Treatment and Reentry Collaborative Program in an amount of $226,036, requiring a 20% match, which will be met with in-kind contributions. And whereas the Rutherford County Correctional Work Center wishes to utilize the services of Volunteer Behavioral Services Care System to implement the grant program. Whereas the Rutherford County previously entered into a Memorandum of Understanding with Volunteer Behavioral Services Care System on March 30th, 2013, and wishes to add terms to the original Memorandum of Understanding. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the County Mayor and all other officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a grant contract with the Department of Justice for a Justice Program Grant in an amount of $226,036, for the period beginning October 1st, 2014, and ending September 30th, 2016. An addendum to the MOU was Volunteer Behavioral Healthcare Systems. Copies of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One and Exhibit Two, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth in length verbatim. And additionally, that the General Fund be amended as follows. Other federal revenue, $117,978. Contract for private agencies, $107,58. Travels, $6,720. And office supplies, $4,200. Resolve this sixteenth day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second on this from Commissioner Piercy. Any questions? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Whereas Section 5-9-109, inclusive, Tennessee code annotated, authorizes the county legislative body to make appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations. And whereas the Rutherford County legislative body recognizes that Domestic Violence Program, Inc., has a need for additional funds to carry on their nonprofit charitable work. And whereas fees collected by the courts for victim's assistance have been set aside in a reserve account and have been accumulated because of conservative budgeting. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding for Domestic Violence Incorporated be increased by $27,900 per year or $2,325 per month, beginning on November 1st, 2014. And additionally, that the General Fund be amended as followed as for the appropriate said contributions. Resolve this sixteenth day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner P. Any questions? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2K, whereas the Rutherford County Drug Court has been notified of a grant award from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for Highway Safety Grant in an amount of $58,566.56, requiring no matching funds. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the County Mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a grant with the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Highway Safety Grant in an amount of $58,566.56. A copy of the same attached here too as Exhibit One and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the period beginning October 1st, 2014, ending September 30th, 2015. Resolve this sixteenth day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Thank you, Commissioner Serino, second. Anyone have any questions? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2L, whereas the Juvenile Detention Center has been awarded a Federal Title I Neglected and Delinquent Program Grant to the Tennessee Alliance for Children and Families, requiring no matching funds in an amount of $70,979. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the County Mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee be and are hereby authorized to execute a Title I Neglected and Delinquent Program Grant to the Tennessee Alliance for Children and Families in an amount of $70,979, for the period beginning October 1st, 2014, and ending September 30th, 2015. And additionally, that the General Fund be amended as follows, and all the required amendments for that, $27,797. Resolve this sixteenth day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Cook. Who was that? All right, any questions or discussions on this? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Whereas SunTrust Bank of Nashville, Tennessee, is a depository bank for Rutherford County, and whereas the undersigned is the County Mayor of Rutherford County, and whereas SunTrust Banks is authorized and directed to honor checks, drafts, and orders of money drawn on the Rutherford County payroll account. Basically, what we're doing here is we're changing the signature for Mr. Wayne Blair, who's now the chairman of the school board, and we'll have another one of these in just a minute. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the County Mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute the business accounts, signature card and deposit account resolution and authorization for business entities. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth at length verbatim, authorizing the facsimile signatures for the Rutherford County payroll account as listed in the foregoing resolution. Resolve this sixteenth day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second, Mr. Kusch? Any questions on that? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item J-2N, whereas Bank of America is a depository bank of the Rutherford County trustees. This is the trustee's account, same as the situation of Mr. Blair on the school board. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the County Mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute the facsimile signature authorization form with Bank of America. A copy of the same being attached here too, Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth at length verbatim, authorizing the facsimile signatures of Rutherford County trustee account in the foregoing resolution, resolved this sixteenth day of October 2014. resolved this 16th day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Stevens. Any comments or questions on this? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
You?
Item J-2O, resolution to adopt the home program policies and procedures for Rutherford County. Whereas Rutherford County Board of Commissioners approved a resolution to accept a Tennessee Housing Department Agency home grant in an amount of $120,000 on August 14th, 2014. And whereas the home program will make available financial and/or technical assistance for the rehabilitation of owner-occupied homes in Rutherford County. Whereas it is a desire of Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to adopt the home program policies and procedures to ensure applicant eligibility criteria in order to meet the qualifications for the rehabilitation grant. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the home program policies and procedures for Rutherford County, Tennessee, a copy of the same hereto as Exhibit 1, incorporated herein by reference as if set forth at length verbatim, are hereby adopted, resolved this 16th day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Did anyone have any questions?
I would say that sometimes we have trouble finding people to use this money. So people out there in the audience are at home, if you own your own home and you need some repairs, it wouldn't hurt to look in, you might just qualify for some assistance right there.
Yes, and we'd like for them, and we will be making public announcement of the availability of these funds, so we do wish to use those up as quickly as we can. All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstained, motion passes.
You?
Item J-2P, whereas the Rutherford County desires to enter into a contract with Greater National Regional Council for personal professional services relative to the administration and management services and assistance to the THDA Home Grant for a fee of $7,200. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Commission that the county mayor be authorized to execute a contract with Greater National Regional Council for personal professional services for the administration and management services of the Tennessee Housing Development Agency Home Grant. A copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth at length verbatim, resolved this 16th day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, from Commissioner P. Any questions? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, one abstained, motion passes.
Item JT, J-2Q is for information only, report on debt obligation. That's required that we give that to all the commissioners once a year, whenever we issue debt. And so if any of y'all are interested on your iPad, you can read over that. And item J-2R is also for information only. The state auditors were not exactly happy with the amount of funding we're keeping in our general purpose school fund and...
Federal projects fund.
And federal projects fund. And they sent a letter, and we sent a reply that's in here also. We disagree with them, but that's there for your nighttime reading if you can't sleep later on tonight. And besides that, I would also, it's not time for public comments yet, but I would like to say congratulations to Commissioner Kusch because he got engaged today, and I happen to have known his wife since we were little, wife-to-be since we were children, and she's a wonderful person. He really is working his way up. Congratulations, Mike Cook.[936.82][936.82](Laughter)
Oh, well, that's even better news than my birthday.[945.23][945.23](Laughter) Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner Jordan, for a job well done there. We appreciate that, every one of us does. And we promised Lisa we won't have these many grants to accept next time. This is sort of an annual process for us. So thank you anyway. All right, let's see, we finished in with the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee, and there's not a report from the Health and Education Committee, and we do have one resolution from the Property Management Committee. Commissioner McAdoo.
We have one resolution tonight, resolution to authorize and approve the sale of 4.4 acres on Dismal Hollow Road. Whereas Rutherford County acquired 4.4 acres on Dismal Hollow Road due to non-payment of property taxes and elsewhere. The period of redemption has elapsed and efforts have been undertaken for the disposition of said tract, including advertisement for sale and notification to adjacent landowners. And whereas pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated 67-5-2508, if no qualified bid is received, the property can be disposed of pursuant to commission approval. And whereas an adjacent neighbor has made an offer of $2,000 for this said Dismal Hollow Road property. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, said 4.4 acres on Dismal Hollow Road be sold for the $2,000. Be it further resolved, appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County are hereby authorized to execute required documents of closure of the sale, resolved this 16th day of October 2014, and I so move.
Mr. Johnson, second, and Commissioner Kusch, does anyone have any questions on this?
Word.
I don't know.
It's in Rutherford County.[1101.65][1101.65](Laughter)
It's about 17 miles out off of about 24 toward Coffee, toward Coffee County, so Mr. Kope says. It's, this piece of property is landlocked, and we listed with the other properties for sale, no bid. We even further listed it for a public sale to receive some bids. We got none. So we finally got the landlord that owns all the property around it to agree to pay this. This $2,000 will get our property taxes paid. It will not get the penalty and the interest and the other cost that we've incurred, but it will put it back on the tax rolls. So that's where we are. So we have a motion, a second, I believe. Any other questions? All right then, all of you in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. McAdoo. All right, next we have one resolution from our Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Schaefer.
For information, Dismal Hollow is off Hoover Gap, and road leading down to Dismal Hollow parallels the interstate. And then, it's about maybe a half mile paved, and then it's some of the rockiest gutted roads you've seen in your life, for information. We have one resolution tonight for your consideration from public safety, and it deals with a contract for Perry County, who used to have a contract with our Juvenile Detention Center to put in juvenile offenders, but they haven't used us in quite some time, so that's why we have a new one tonight. Resolution, whereas the attached contract and amendment, a contract between Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Center and Perry County for housing of juvenile offenders, a copy of said contract being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length, as if set forth verbatim, is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to enter into and execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County, the contract and amendment to contract with Perry County for housing of juvenile offenders. Be it resolved this 16th day of October 2014. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, from Commissioner Piercy and others. Any questions on this? If not, all of you in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, Public Works and Planning Committee, we have three resolutions there to address tonight, and we'll call on Commissioner Jernigan.
Public Works and Planning Commission has three. The first resolution is to approve drainage easements on tax map 138 partial 13.02. This is Thompson Rowe. Whereas pursuant to the Private Act, authorizing the Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. The attached Exhibit 1 are the easements recommended by the planning department. And whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the planning department. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approved as additional public drainage easements, the attached list, Exhibit 1, as submitted by the planning department in accordance with Tennessee Code annotated 54-903 and 54-904. These public drainage easements, in addition to those previously approved, shall be the only public drainage easements which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolved this 16th day of October 2014, I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Reed. Any questions or comments? All of you in favor of this, then please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Second resolution is to accept a waiver of damage by landowners regarding the last two tenths touched by Briley Road. Resolved to accept the waiver of damage by landowners regarding the last two tenths mile touched by Briley Road. Whereas the lawful owner of the last oh-two tenths of Briley Road has signed a waiver of damage requesting the last two tenths of Briley Road be closed and waive any claimant for damages sustained as a result of said closing. A copy of said waiver being attached hereto is Exhibit 1. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, the last two tenths of Briley Road be closed and removed from the Rutherford County road book with the Rutherford County Highway Department having no further responsibilities to maintain the same. Resolved this 16th day of October 2014, I so move.
All right, second, excuse me, who was that?
Alton.
I thought it was on this side. Commissioner Kusch and others, I believe. Okay, anyone have a question on this? If not, if you're in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Continue, Mr. Jernigan.
Ex-resolute to approve lease extension between Walter Hill Convenience Center and BF Highway Systems of Tennessee. Whereas the amendment to Convenience Center construction lease agreement attached here to Exhibit 1 between BF Highway Systems of Tennessee, LLC, and Rutherford County, Tennessee, is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to approve the amendment to Convenience Center construction and lease agreement with BF Highway Systems of Tennessee, LLC, pursuant to the terms and provisions contained in said lease agreement. Be it further resolved, the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby authorized to execute far and on behalf of Rutherford County the First Amendment of Convenience Center construction and lease agreement with BF Highway Systems of Tennessee, LLC, resolved this 16th day of October 2014, I so move.
Commissioner Piercy, second. Anyone have any questions on this? All of you in favor of this, then, please say aye. Opposed? Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Jernigan. There is not a report from our Steering Committee tonight. Is there any other business that anyone wishes to bring before this body? We have two gentlemen rising. Mr. Johnson was behind you there, Mr. P. Go right ahead.
I will be brief. Congratulations on your red letter day. Today is a red letter day for my wife and I. Forty-nine years ago, she and I were married, and in lieu of an anniversary card, I'm taking this opportunity to publicly wish her a happy anniversary.[1598.51][1598.51](Laughter)
All right.
Her name is Elizabeth.
Thank you.[1605.65][1605.65](Applause) Commissioner P.
This Saturday, I believe it's the 17th, 17th, 18th, whatever this coming Saturday is, from 6:00 to 10:00, there'll be a Country Hand Breakfast at the Ketchikan Fire Department. Want to invite everybody out. Thanks.
It is very good. It's excellent. Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a pattern here that keeps emerging because it's also my mother's birthday today, and they are out celebrating, but I wanted to publicly wish my mother a happy birthday from Murfreesboro here to Smyrna. But one more thing, I also wanted to make sure the commissioners were able to check their email and receive their invitation to come tour Smyrna Primary School with the new computer lab and a lot of the improvements that we voted on over the last couple of years. Very excited about that in Smyrna. November 6th and 7th, from 9:00 to 10:00, there's an email listed that you can send in whether you'll be able to attend. I can appreciate the fact, a lot of us work, won't be able to attend, but if you can go, go out there and look at what's happening at Smyrna Primary. A lot to be proud of. And as a commissioner from Smyrna, speaking for Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Allen, we certainly appreciate your support for Smyrna.
Thank you. Commissioner Schaefer.
I don't want to get in trouble after all these people saying anniversaries and birthdays. My daughter-in-law's birthday, I won't say the age, is Saturday, and my wife's is Tuesday. Excuse me, my daughter-in-law's is Sunday.
All right, thank you. Any other business? Commissioner Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not talking about any birthdays or anniversaries right now, but I have played mailman this evening in all the commissioners' mailboxes. They have a copy of the leaf, which comes from the St. Clair Street Senior Center, which we help support in a way. And if you have not taken the opportunity to go by the center out there, you need to do so, because there's a lot of things happening there, a lot of involvement for those that are 60 and over, and they'd like to inform you that they are not what you call senior citizens. They are active, they are involved. And something I really didn't know when I was out there just the other day, this is the largest senior center in the state of Tennessee, and it's something we should be proud of. So invite everybody. If you have an opportunity to stop in there, do so. Or if you know somebody that would like to get involved in some activities, they're not only just in recreation either. They provide a lot of, provide a lot of information about Medicare, anything that a senior is needing out there, they can provide it. So I just want to make sure everybody gets this information, take it home and read it.
And thank you for being willing to serve and participate in that, and that's a great activity there for Rutherford County. Any other business to come before this body? If not, then we are adjourned, and thank you very, very much for your participation.